Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, November 2nd, 2020. We're here for the purpose of the Committee of the Whole. Governor of the State of Illinois has declared disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, restricting individuals to gatherings of 25 persons or less, and all of the City of Elmhurst is covered by this disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID outbreak, the mayor of the City of Elmhurst has determined that an in-person meeting for the November 2nd, 2020 Committee of the Whole may not be practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the aldermen of the city council participating in the November 2nd, 2020 Committee of the Whole meeting, wherever their physical location, shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. Alderman Toledo, can you hear me?
I can.
Alderman Hanquist, can you hear me?
Yes, Mayor, I can hear you.
Alderman Hanquist and Alderman Toledo, can you hear each other?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. We already did the pledge today. I don't think I'm done with that. I'd ask Clerk Tamer to call the roll.
Brennan?
Here.
Mulliner?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Veremis?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Bram? Absent. Palmski? Excuse me. Palmski?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Toledo?
I'm sorry, who?
Toledo.
Okay.
Here.
Park?
Here.
Levin?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Hanquist?
Here.
Twelve present, one absent, on vacancy.
Twelve present, one absent. We have a quorum. On to announcements. Any announcements? So you know, we'll go on to public comment. Has anybody signed up for public comment?
No, Mayor.
Is there anybody on the phone who has dialed in for public comment? Okay. No one signed up and no one's on the phone. So that concludes public comment. Onto approval of minutes. Minutes from the October 26, 2020 Committee of the Whole. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as stated. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Discussion. Let's clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram? Absent. Palmski?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Committee of the Whole minutes are approved. Onto business for the council. Continued review of fiscal budget 2021. Any questions from the council before we get started? Okay. I'll remind city manager that we want to do our best to keep this south of 10 o'clock. I've already had one alderman express the desire for that, and I support that, Alderman, 100 percent.
Understood.
City manager, are we going to turn it over to you, or are we going to go right to Mary Beth and Sue Sadowski?
I just have one thing to bring up. At your dais positions tonight, there was a packet of budget info. The first two pages are replacement pages. There was a typo on the graph, so if you supplement or, excuse me, replace those pages, we appreciate it. And then the remainder of the packet is budget, financial policies, and supplemental information that goes at the back of your budget. Other than that, we welcome Board President Sue Sadowski and Library Executive Director Mary Beth Harper. That will take us through their budget, which starts on page 160 in our budget books. And I-
You ready?
Good to you, Sue.
Does this one on? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Morley and the members of city councils. A pleasure to review the library's budget with you tonight. As said, I'm Sue Sadowski, President of the Library Board of Trustees, and we don't have any other trustee members with us here tonight. To say 2020 has been an interesting year is an understatement. This past year has forced us to rethink everything we do to serve our community. As a public library, our goal is to provide open access to all. What once used to be a bustling building welcoming an average of 1,500 people per day was abruptly closed on March 11th and remained closed until June 15th. When the library shut down, we pivoted immediately to provide more service online. We increased the lending levels of all digital materials, set up a virtual reference desk, and even provided virtual social services through our social services specialist. As soon as we were allowed to provide curbside service, we implemented the media takeout service and filled over 700 requests for materials from Elmhurst residents. We were one of the first libraries to reopen when nonessential businesses were allowed. We're proud of this and taking a conservative path to reopening services slowly to provide as safe of an environment as we can as for our patrons as well as our staff. We now welcome an average of 500 people per day. Our once busy parking lot is now the least of our worries. Patrons now use the library mostly on a grab-and-go basis and attend all programming online. We are staffing on a hybrid level. Managers are in the building for all of the usual hours, and while other staff shift between working from home and working at the library. Everything is different, but somehow we've managed to settle into a new normal. The good news is, is that our patrons are still using the library in ways that fit this new normal. Patrons are back, albeit in a different way than before, but nonetheless, they're here. They are checking out more than 100,000 items a month. Most people come into the library, choose their items, but patrons also have the option of never having to enter the library and may pick up library items through the drive-up window. Patrons are also attending programs. All programs are held virtually, and the community is partaking. Just last month, Mary Beth received a call from a patron who expressed her pleasure with seeing her three-year-old daughter attend a storytime with Miss Katie online. She said her daughter was supposed to attend preschool, but due to the pandemic, that wasn't possible. Her daughter now looks forward to her weekly storytime and thinks Miss Katie is her teacher. We're also still providing meeting rooms to the public. Meeting rooms were an incredibly popular service to the community, and shutting them down was especially difficult. Savvy members and staff figured out a way for the library to host virtual meeting rooms. Patrons can reserve a room and tell meeting participants to attend the meeting via our website. Then library staff act as a concierge service by putting people in the appropriate breakout rooms. These rooms provide a more secure way for people to host their meetings, and staff members also provide assistance in arranging those meetings. Additionally, we have just added an internet access point to our roof directed at the parking lot. This means that residents can sit in their cars in the parking lot and have access to high-speed internet service that they might not have personally. We like to think of this as a mobile office opportunity for our community. All of these things and more were done within the last eight months in response to adapting to the pandemic. We're grateful that we are an organization that can still serve the public. We are open and we're thriving. We will take each day as it comes and adjust as necessary. The management team has considered every new step very carefully. Our job is to balance the need to serve our patrons for whom we exist while always taking into account the health and safety of staff. Before you tonight, you have our budget, which includes not only our operating expenses, but also the funds needed for repayment of our building bonds. We are in the final years of paying off the building bonds. We have worked with city finance department, and because spending is down and revenues have remained stable, we will not ask the taxpayers for any additional funds this year. The library board of trustees unanimously approved a 0% levy this year. Next year, we expect to reduce the levy to reflect the payoff of the bonds. Finally, I'd like to thank you for helping us make this library such a valuable resource to the citizens of Elmhurst. Successful organizations always take a group effort. We need the skills of the staff to make the library and inviting an interesting place. We need the library board of trustees to provide guidance and support to the staff. But ultimately, we need the residents of Elmhurst to continue to enjoy their library. So on behalf of the board and in the spirit of teamwork and support, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council, as well as the city manager and the rest of city staff who help us on a daily basis. Thank you, and we'll take any questions you might have tonight, or comments.
Any questions for President Sadowski or Mary Beth?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Hanquist?
I had a couple of questions.
Okay. Shoot.
I'm just curious to get a little bit of information regarding what makes up the commodities costs. I see it's pretty stable, but there looks to be a proposed increase for 2022.
Mr. Hanquist?
Down 21, 22. Sorry?
That's okay. Is there a line item on a page you're pointing to?
It's under expenditures on the front page, 161.
Got it.
So there's three line items under expenditures. There's commodities, repair and maintenance, and other expenses. I just wanted to get a little bit of detail on what makes up those numbers.
Okay, so I'm going to answer Alderman Hanquist. Under commodities, we have our materials that we buy for our patrons, and we also have equipment, janitorial supplies, and a couple of other supply lines. So that's basically what makes up the commodities. Then if you're asking about, I think you were also talking about repairs and maintenance? Or were you just asking about commodities?
No, repairs. I am curious. It seems like a large dollar amount for repairs and maintenance. I was just curious why such a large number?
Okay, so under repairs and maintenance, we also have our parking lot, and we are planning to redo our parking lot next summer to the tune of about $300,000, or 350, actually. We're working with the city public work staff, and hopefully, we're going to get on the schedule when you're redoing streets and stuff, and we're going to take that parking lot all the way down. It's only a shame that we didn't plan it this year, but we couldn't have foreseen that the parking lot would be mostly empty. So that's why that increase in that line, that quite substantial increase, like I said, I believe I budgeted $350,000 for the parking lot.
That makes sense. You've got a similar large number for 2022. Is there something else that you're also planning for that year?
Yeah, you know, I think that year, we're thinking about redoing carpeting upstairs. We redid the, we totally renovated the second floor, and we did not redo the carpeting when we did the rest of the renovations. That renovation, I think, is actually now eight years old, believe it or not. So the carpeting is the original carpeting, and the building will be 18 years old in 2021. Yeah, it's crazy, I know, right? So that, I think that's what we planned for in 2022. But of course, that'll all go through the whole budget process again, you know?
Yeah. I was just seeing the jump from the 239 to the 567 to the 476, and that's why I brought the questions.
Right.
And, I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
And then there's a line item for other expenses. I'm just curious what makes up other expenses.
Oh, that is, let me, I'm sorry, let me find that. That's under, this is different than my budget, but other expenses is just kind of miscellaneous stuff. It's not a big budget line, obviously. And what we have in there is usually, where are you at?
Please, please.
Yeah.
The breakdown?
Yeah, I do. Sorry. But it's under, oh, other. I'm so sorry. I thought you were talking about a specific line. So under other, yes, we have conference seminars and training. So that's basically where, any training for staff. We also have contingencies, very small line, only $1,000. That's where if something else doesn't fit in. Memberships is basically professional memberships for staff and board members. And then we don't use personal recruitment. Rentals is the biggest expense in that line, and that's our copier rentals mostly, leases or anything like that that we're renting. And then sundry is a line that we do some of our staff appreciation things in. So, yeah, sorry about that. I was confused because I'm looking at the detail report and not the other one. Forgive me.
Yeah, no, no problem. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Levin?
Thank you. I just had two questions. One is, was there a change a couple of years back on the, I might be thinking of something else, where we weren't going to collect fines anymore, where they were reduced? But did that ever go into play? And if so, what was the experience in terms of the operation?
So, we've brought that to the board a couple times. The board is still considering it, but they did not vote to not collect fines anymore. I will probably bring it back again because it's becoming, as I spoke a couple of years ago, it was becoming trendy in libraries do that. Now, it's really taken off, especially after the pandemic, where most libraries are not collecting fines anymore. We did this last year, turn on automatic renewals, which will basically take our fine revenue down by at least half, because what that means is that your books, your items are just automatically renewing. So it's a good, it was kind of a stepping stone from cutting off fines altogether to then taking that income down by about half. And now, during pandemic, we weren't collecting any fines. And I do plan to bring that back again to the board because it's becoming really commonplace in libraries, and fairly soon, we'll be one of the only libraries that is charging fines. And the income line was about $70,000, I think we were collecting at one point, give or take, and now will be down this year, too. I think we're going to collect maybe $20,000 at the most, maybe 18. So it's definitely decreased, and will continue to with automatic renewals. And it's just, again, kind of goodwill and not a major income line, but a major annoyance to most people. So, so we've visited, we've visited a few times with the board, and I will be bringing it back again.
All right. Well, I'll bring my books back then. The other question I wanted to ask you is, and it came up when I was on Public Affairs and Safety Committee, and you mentioned it tonight, that there are certain social services that are being offered through the library, which many people may not be aware of, and I'm not sure I understand the extent and how well, and you said you expanded, so I wonder if you could discuss that a little bit about what social services are being offered?
Sure. So, we didn't actually expand during the pandemic, but what we did is we made it available virtually to patrons. So, the social services specialist we have started out as an intern. We worked with our college, or our university, actually, to house some interns at the library. That's another thing in libraries that is trending, is hiring a social worker. And I think when I talked about this a few years ago, I thought, oh, we would never need that here. And then here we are, just two years later, in my office, thinking, oh my gosh, how do I answer these questions, and what do I do with these issues? So that's when we decided to get interns. It worked out so well that we decided to hire one of our interns full-time. She's actually kind of doing a split position where she's doing social services, but she's also working on our desk and doing reference services and other things, so it worked out really well for us. But she's not doing any clinical hours, so that means she's not necessarily counseling people on a regular basis. But what she's doing is helping them get to other social services, fill out forms, find housing, things like that, you know? So some of these services that we were being asked to do as staff members on our reference desk, that we certainly aren't qualified to do, nor do we have the time to spend individually with a patron, filling out social security forms, or finding housing for someone who's just lost their housing, or, not even housing, but finding a bed for someone for the evening, and some of those things that we had been doing prior to her being there. So it's been a really great experience for our patrons, and she does have some regular patrons who come and see her, again, not necessarily for clinical hours, but to help them fill out forms. A lot of, you know, a lot of the stuff that she does, or she used to do, was job finding. Really interesting, I think when the recession, the last recession, when the housing crisis recession hit, a lot of people lost their jobs, and they were at an age that when they could apply again for jobs, it was a difficult age to find a job. And then they were also grappling with all these, the resources about how to put out resumes online and do things like that. So she's able to provide that extra time and those extra services that our staff can't necessarily do because there's other patrons around. So it's been a really great relationship so far, and during COVID, it's really been kind of incredible. And she also is doing, you know, some trainings and stuff for staff, and she's working with other agencies in the community. She just did a program with the League of Women Voters, and she's working with the hospital. And so a lot of those partnership-y type programs, too, that work out so well for the community.
All right. Thank you very much. I mean, I'm very proud of the library. We have, always finds a way to adapt and continue to serve. I thank you both.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Dunn?
Yes, I'm looking at page 166, the detail. So, up at the top, Alderman Hanquist was asking about commodities. So it looks like you're making a major change in the content at the library. There were big-ticket items that were digital content and books. Of course, we think of books when we go to the library, but they're zeroed out for the next two years. And then the audiovisual really becoming the largest line item. So what's the strategy there in zeroing those other, those two traditional ones out and going heavy on the audiovisual?
You know what? That's actually a little bit of an error in the budget, which I will have corrected. So basically, what we did is we took all of our materials lines, and we combined it into one line, is what you're seeing in 2021. So the $850,000 there, that line, when it is audiovisual materials, was just supposed to say materials. And basically, we took what was digital content, periodicals, books, and, yeah, that's it. All of our material, and other nonprint. So those are all the things that we buy for the public that we lend out. We're combining those into one line, and I apologize, Tom, I think we went over this budget so many times. And I swear we had that corrected, but whatever happened, it was supposed to just say materials. And so, and that's obviously to give us more flexibility within those lines, because right now, when we're breaking them out, this year, we're going to go over in digital materials, because when this hit, we just increased all of our spending and just put a bunch of money into there. So next year, if we're still in this strange, you know, who knows what's going to happen, we're just going to have a lot more room to kind of move that money around within those lines. So that's what that is. I apologize that it wasn't, yes.
Okay.
I even just circled those things and didn't notice it again.
My other question is, in terms of paying the debt service off, so next year is the final $2 million payment, and then after that, it's completely paid off, so the levy will reduce by $2 million in 2022?
Yeah. We're looking at around, I think, 20%, or so is what we're thinking now.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Brennan?
Thank you. First off, I would like to commend you on reopening, you know, so successfully the 500 a day. That's very impressive. I will admit, the Brennan House was very happy to check out a cricket machine, which I didn't even know was possible. My question is, is that something because of COVID, or is that something that's always been available to the residents?
So, we just started lending the cricket machines during COVID, but we have a large collection of items we call Library of Extraordinary Things. So we lend all kinds of interesting items, like waffle irons, and cuisinarts, and cake pans, and crickets, and knitting needles. And when COVID struck, the crickets were hugely popular down in the bakery. And we didn't open the bakery up right away. We did open it now, but we're only taking reservations there, and because it's a small space, we're accommodating like two people, and only allowing them to stay for a short period of time. Crickets were so popular that we decided we would put them into the lending library, and I'm sure they're going to stay there, too. I mean, we'll probably buy more for the bakery, but they're just incredibly popular. So, glad you got one.
Well, I'm now a proud owner of a cricket, by the way.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you for that. So, thank you. I was, I was curious if that was just a one-time, so that will be an ongoing-
Yeah, I'm sure it's going to be very popular, and we'll probably continue that.
If I only knew. I could convince my wife, I can still rent it. Thank you.
I'm going to speak for, I'm going to say, half the people up here, or maybe just me. What's a cricket?
It's a, it's a machine that cuts paper and vinyl and-
Oh, it's like a mini CAD machine that cuts stuff out?
Sort of, yeah. And people just get really, really creative with it. It's actually really pretty cool, the things people are doing. It can intricately cut things, paper and vinyl, and then they make t-shirts and all kinds of things. Invitations and-
Ask Alderman Brennan.
Yeah. Clearly. Mayor is unbelievable.
Party at-
My electrical bill in one week doubled.
Nice-looking suit, Mike.
Party at Brennan's house.
But, yeah, come on over, and Kathy will show you what a cricket machine can do.
I knew, I knew it had to fall under the extraordinary things category.
Yes, yes.
And I assumed it wasn't an actual cricket.
I'll take out the blunt pan, too, if you need it.
Yeah, yeah. Right. It's pretty interesting.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions, either for President Sadowski or Director Harper? Anyone else? I think you hold the record for the most, the mother of all silver linings, that you don't have a parking problem.
I know.
Appreciate that, because usually, it's going the other way when we have these conversations with the libraries.
Yeah, we won't be talking about the parking lot tonight, huh?
So-
And I never thought I'd be able to say zero levy while I was still sitting up here.
Well, and we appreciate that as well. So anything you wish to add before we let you go?
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sorry. Alderman Hanquist or Alderman Toledo. Alderman Toledo, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I was trying to break in there. Just a couple of final questions here. Thank you to the library for all the work you've done to pivot in these unusual times. As you know, the city, the city's main operating budget was affected this year from COVID. We had a prediction of almost $10 million in reduced revenue. We cut the operating budget by the same amount to stay fiscally solvent and responsible. And I just wanted to understand, you know, even with the things that you've done, which I'm sure required staff time, the library was- staff time, the library was closed completely for three months out of the year. And I'm just wondering if you could help me understand how there was not really an impact to your 2020 budget. If you could help me understand, kind of, what, what transpired, especially on the part-time line item, that would be helpful. And then, secondly, I would just like to call out and make everyone aware that I have asked Tom to work with Mary Beth on a circle back related to the monthly balance, for the fund balance, the $3 million that you guys hold in your checking account every year. If we could get a record of the monthly balance for that as it moves through the year, and you await your property tax revenue. Thank you.
So, I think you're asking why, for your, one of your questions was about what we did during the pandemic, during the library closure, what staff did?
Yeah, it was a question about staff, but also it was a question of, I think, Alderman, I'll paraphrase, and Alderman Toledo can correct me, but I also, I think she wondered why she maybe didn't see a small, a larger reduction in your overall operating expenses from what you budgeted.
So, from my projections, yeah. So, first of all, I just want to point out that my projections were made, these projections, we passed our budget in August, so I was working off of July numbers, just so you know. So, I do project that we are going to come in even lower than what I've already projected here. When you talk about our staffing, our staff is down. We probably had about, I think we're up to about 15 people who retired or decided not to come back after the pandemic. Most of those were part-time people. We did have one full-time staff member retire. Most of them were part-time people. So, we will see quite a significant savings in our staffing line at the end of this year. Some of the other lines that we will see significant decreased spending, and will be our commodities lines. Obviously, during the three months we weren't open, two months, actually, of staff not being in the building, we were not buying a lot of materials. Publishers weren't even publishing a lot, and we weren't getting a lot of stuff. Once, once that came back online, we were receiving large amounts of backed-up materials that hadn't come in and processing all those. But definitely, the publishing industry still is not back up to where they were before. When you talk about movies and things, they're not being made like they were before, so I do predict that those lines will be less spent than I've even predicted here so far. Our, our income lines obviously weren't reduced much because most of our income, as you saw in the graph, 91% of it comes from property taxes. I wasn't sure what was going to happen. I think none of us were at first when this hit, and we were lucky when in June, our tax payments came in as predicted. And then again, it looks like we're going to collect everything. So, that was good for us. Our fine revenue is down, but again, that's, that, that income is such a small part of what makes up our budget. So, I do predict that we will have less spending than what I've even predicted here. But again, my board passed this budget in August, and these are based on mostly July numbers and predictions like that. So, everything was still sort of unknown. We had only been back open a month. I will say, though, that when we were off during COVID, most staff, full-time staff, was working from home the entire time. Most of the managers were obviously in and out of the library during some of that time. Part-time staff was also doing stuff online. We worked right away to set up a virtual reference desk, which means patrons still had access to the library to ask questions and do other things. We increased all the digital materials. We also made online library cards a thing, so that patrons can get their library cards online. And we spent a lot of time trying to help patrons that way, and help them then get acclimated to using digital resources. We had the social services. We switched all of our programming immediately to online and set up virtual meeting rooms. So, there was still a lot of stuff that staff was doing at home. And then, obviously, the management team was doing a lot of planning about what it would look like to reopen the library. We were one of the first libraries to reopen. Most of the other libraries around us, I think Naperville and Elmhurst, we both opened on June 15th. A lot of other libraries did not open until after July 4th. So, they opened, I think, that, the 6th, or whatever, that Monday was. We also opened with all of our regular hours. So, we were open 72 hours before the pandemic, and we opened 72 hours immediately on June 15th when we opened. A lot of libraries, and I'm comparing, but a lot of libraries opened a lot less hours. And to me, I thought, you know, what does that do for anyone, because it's no safer to not be open on a Sunday than it is to be open on a Friday. And also, being open all 72 hours gave a lot more room for patrons to use the building and socially distance, where if I had opened less hours, they would have had to cram into, you know, obviously, it makes sense, less hours. So, being open 72 hours a week and staffing all the public desks still requires a good amount of staff. What I can tell you is that when I first started reporting here to the board, we used to have 150 staff members. We're down to 101 staff members now. So, we have seen, not just in the pandemic, we didn't lose all of those people, but we started to kind of improve efficiencies and decrease the size of our staff a couple of years ago in anticipation for the $15 an hour minimum wage increase. So, now we're at this level, and then, obviously, the pandemic hit. And as I said, I think, I think I'm down about 15 staff members, with 14 of those being part-time, but a couple of significant part-time positions left, too, 28 hours, things like that. So, anyway, so, you, we will see more savings, but the staff has been kind of, it's been happening kind of gradually. So, we're not seeing that all right now in what the numbers that you're looking at now, but you will be seeing, we'll be seeing more of that as we go on. I think that's what you're asking? Does that answer your question? And then, when you were talking about fund balance each month, I know Tom and I have worked on that in the past, and he will, will go ahead and do that. We do carry that larger fund balance, because being on a calendar year of January through December, we don't collect our first tax payments until the end of June. So, we used to, when we were on the, you know, the April year, worked a lot better for us. And most libraries that our districts are on a July 1 year to June 30th year, just for that reason, because of how the tax payments come in, and because most, all of our revenue is based on property tax dollars. And the other thing is, you know, just to add one more thing, we have an 18-year-old building. I'm having an engineering study done right now. It's the first one we've had since the building. So, we had a company come in, and they did a real thorough study. They're looking at the roof, they're looking at all of our major components, but we do know that within the next 10 years or so, we're probably going to have some major replacement items, something, you know, who knows? Roof, we're hoping it's in great shape. We're hoping our chiller and our boiler and all those other components are in good shape. But we, the parking lot this year is $300,000. You know, the carpeting is going to be probably another $300,000. So, some of these maintenance things to keep up with. And then, of course, if we have to put a roof on, or redo the chiller, the boiler, all those things. It's a 90,000-square-foot building, so it's, it's, you know, there's a lot of maintenance and upkeep with that. So, that's part of the reason that we are making sure that we have enough money to move forward and do all those repairs and maintenance.
Alderman Toledo?
Do you have any follow-up questions to that answer?
To Ms. Harbor. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Alderman Honquist, before we move on, any questions? Oh, he already asked. Okay. Any other questions from any of the elected officials? Seeing none, I want to thank Mary Beth and Sue. Thank you so much for coming, and thanks for all of your hard work during these unprecedented times.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, we would like to move on to the Elmhurst History Museum budget, which starts on page 143. And joining us to talk about that are Heritage Foundation Board President Rob Butler and Executive Director Dave Olberg. And I will turn it over to Mr. Butler.
Thank you very much. I'm guessing this is on. Okay, thanks. Mayor Morley, City Manager Grabowski, Assistant City Manager Cope, and members of City Council, thank you for having us here this evening as part of the city's annual budget process. My name is Robert Butler, and I represent the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation. Due to the virus, no other members could be present this evening. Our mission is to act as the fundraising arm for the Elmhurst History Museum and the One Room Schoolhouse. We support the museum by advocating and educating on its behalf, and by fundraising to support an annual grant to help the museum reach its goals and extend the impact of the city's approved budget. As the foundation's summer newsletter said, this year is one for the books. I've no doubt we're all looking forward to New Year's Eve, when we can at last say farewell to 2020. But during this plague year, the museum rose to the challenge and actually expanded its activities. And I'd like to tell you about some of them, indicate the support in the community for the museum, and suggest something of its plans for the coming year. Despite closing down on the state's orders for three months in the spring, the museum this year staged three major exhibits: On the Right Track, The Great American Road Trip, and Frank Lloyd Wright: Architecture of the Interior, as well as half a dozen smaller pop-up exhibits. And the museum staff turned out to be online geniuses. They created walking and biking tours of the city, both virtual and actual, for residents desperate to escape isolation at home. A series of miniature documentaries focused on different aspects of the city's past: The Elmhurst Chicago Stone Quarry, or the Elm skating rink. For Halloween, classic poems and stories, like Poe's The Tell-Tale Heart, were offered online. Other online programs that drew people to participate, such as a citywide version of the Clue Detective Board game, or visits with the schoolmarm in the One Room Schoolhouse drew hundreds of virtual visitors, many of them from beyond the city's boundaries. At the same time, the public stepped forward to support the museum this year. The major exhibits drew significant support from local businesses: Fisi Roofing, York Theatre, the Community Bank of Elmhurst. 100-plus Women Who Care awarded a grant that, among other things, paid for a computer and camera, which helped expand the museum's online educational programs and its outreach programs for seniors with Alzheimer's. And the Heritage Foundation, in addition to its annual grant, helped the museum acquire a 19th-century portrait of Jane Byrd Bryan, wife of Thomas Barber Bryan, one of Elmhurst's most significant residents. For the coming, hopefully less stressful, year, the museum plans to continue its award-winning path. Director Dave Olberg has applied for an Illinois Public Museum Capital Grant for assistance in gallery lighting and access to the second floor. Three more major exhibits are planned, which the foundation will support. Several more mini documentaries will be produced, and the schoolmarm will expand her lessons to the surrounding schools. And the foundation hopes that by the fall, it will be possible to hold Beer Fest, which happened, which had to be canceled for this year, once more. What makes the museum's excellent programming, outreach, and award-winning success possible? There are several things, of course. The support of the city and its residents, the support of major exhibit donors, and the Heritage Foundation. But pride of place, I think, must go to the director and staff of the Elmhurst History Museum. Exhibits are nice, and documentaries are fun to watch, but without the people who worked so hard to create them, none of it would be possible. The people are the key. Elmhurst is indeed fortunate to have such a dedicated staff at the museum. On its behalf, and on the behalf of the foundation, we thank you for your ongoing support of this jewel in its cultural fabric.
Okay. Would you like me to talk a little bit about what we have teed up for next year, or answer questions? How should I proceed?
Go ahead and talk about what you have queued up in the budget, and then I'm sure there will be plenty of questions afterwards.
Okay. So, I do want to guide you just a little bit through, just follow up with what Rob had to say for just a moment as well. We made a significant pivot into online programming in 2020, and we're going to continue that trend into 2021. If you had asked me if we could reach this number of people a year ago, I would have said no. Our online presence so far has helped us connect with 166,883 people as of 1 o'clock this afternoon. So, we've learned a lot of lessons. We're not going to, we're not going to lose our Facebook Live tours, Jess's outreach programs, virtual field trips, all of that. We're connecting with a lot of communities well beyond us as well. As we go through the budget, we've got some very exciting things teed up for 2021. Three exhibits, Together We Cannot Fail: Overcoming the Great Depression, the traveling exhibit To the Moon Snoopy Stores with NASA, which is going to be a really family-friendly favorite. And then, in the fall, we'll be celebrating Elmhurst University's 150th anniversary with a restorative exhibit as well, continuing with the documentaries, continuing with the online program, including a new program that's going to cross the curriculum and talk about Carl Sandberg and his years in Elmhurst, which is going to both fit into the English and history categories as well, and quite a bit more, which I can explain in greater detail if you'd like. You're looking at our 2021 projected budget here. I would call attention just to a couple of things very quickly. At first blush, that figure that you're looking at at the bottom looks like a significant increase, 1.266,800. I will tell you that 255,300 of that, and another 30,000 of that are all caught up in the Illinois Public Museum Capital Grant that Dr. Butler just talked about. If we receive the grant, it's going to allow us to do some really significant improvements to our exhibits, to our campus. If we don't receive it, we're not going to do those things at all. So, there is no budget impact. If I back-end out that, and we also have one erroneous mark on here, and that is expense line item 60-39 EHMF Endowment. That actually, figure should actually be zero, because there is an income line instead for that, and that is support from the foundation in the amount of $46,900. So, you're actually looking at a net budget proposal of $934,600. So, with that, I think I can open it up for any questions or comments you might have, or clarification.
Mr. Olberg, why don't you go into that grant a little more, the current status of it, how you apply for it, when you're going to know about it?
Yes, sir. So, we were very excited to see a restoration of the Illinois Public Museum Capital Grant program in the, in the state's budget. We have been a past recipient of that on several occasions, which has allowed us to do some wonderful things with the One Room Schoolhouse and with the Gloss Mansion. In the case of this particular grant, we saw an opportunity to make a lot of small and mid-sized changes to the campus that would actually lift the entire campus. We're talking about improving ADA accessibility to both sites with a more robust lift into the Gloss Mansion, powered door into the Education Center, retrofitting a couple of more of the restrooms so that they are ADA-accessible. So, we're going to double the number of ADA-accessible restrooms on site, adding new interactive exhibits to, by all accounts, our national award-winning exhibit on the history of Elmhurst. And I should give a shout-out to our team as well. We got a national award for last year's exhibit, too, which I'm very, very proud of them for. Also, taking out a power turnaround island in the parking lot to have more contiguous programming space on our campus, adding a power box to the north end of the campus, so we have more external power, so that when we can do additional in-person programming, we're able to welcome bigger crowds and do bigger splashier things. We've had a ton of great success with our summer programming, using our full one-acre campus, actually. So, if we receive that grant, it really is going to allow us to do a lot of great things. I've heard back on phases one and two on the grant application, they're asking good questions of me, which means that we're still wending our way through the process. We hope to hear about this in December or early January. The timeline was extended for the application a little bit because of the COVID shutdown, but it could allow us to do some great things, and I'm pretty bullish about this one. I feel very good.
Okay. Additional questions? Alderman Levin?
Thank you. Yeah, I was wondering, you know, the coronavirus is on an April 1 to April 1 fiscal year, so the Beer Festival, I know, has been a major fundraiser for the foundation. And you didn't, is, I'm wondering, I wasn't clear what you were saying about the line item 60-39, but is that reflective of the fact that there, I guess, two questions. Could you repeat what you said? And secondly, can you talk about any impact of activities that might negatively, that would reduce the funds from the foundation?
Certainly, okay. So, we have a line item that's currently in the budget, and we're, we're readjusting how we're going to be doing this going forward a little bit. And that line item is expense line item 60-39 EHMF. And that line item is expense line item 60-39 EHMF Endowment in the amount of $46,900. That's erroneously showing up as an expense when actually what we're getting is a grant of $46,900 from the Foundation, which if we back up a little bit to, let me go to page 89, we have line 14-00 Museum Trust Fund, going to amend that figure to $46,900. So we've got $46,900 as a grant coming in to support the programming. That's what's actually going on. Now, as far as Beer Fest goes, we held off on canceling as long as we could because we wanted to see what was going to happen, and we had to make a final go-no-go decision this year in early July. When it became apparent with the state guidelines, we weren't going to be able to do it, and also because of the fact that a lot of the success of it is dependent on sponsorships from small and medium-sized businesses in the community, this didn't seem like a good time to go out and ask for sponsor dollars, and certainly we couldn't safely carry out the Beer Fest as normal. Last year, that netted about $35,000, so we don't have that income there. However, the Foundation, through their annual appeal, through successful management of the endowment fund, is able to generate interest to still give a gift, and so we're very thankful to have that endowment in place as well. And certainly, the sponsorships are helping us as well. So that does definitely get us through, and we're able to continue to have positive budget impact there. I don't know if that entirely answers your question or not, but I sure miss Beer Fest this year.
Well, I did, too, but thank you for the information. I understand what you said.
Alderman, if I can further clarify, that $46,900 is reflected in other expenses in that budget? So it was just, it shouldn't have been reflected as one expense, it is in other expenses within the budget.
Yeah, it's completely underwriting the exhibits line item, it's completely underwriting the educational programs line item, there's money going towards consulting fees, there's money going towards printing of a new brochure, for example, to tout the expanded roster of educational programs we've developed as we've been working on more online programming as well.
Follow-up here?
Yeah.
So will this page be adjusted before the final budget, then, to, before we pass it, because it can't really go out in this shape?
So what we'll do is, this will be part of, we're in the process of preparing all of the carryovers and everything, so that'll be part of the schedule, and the final budget ordinance will be amended and changed based on that. So we'll include it as part of that reconciliation.
Thank you. Can we make sure that the correction that Director Harper mentioned previously is also made? She mentioned the line item was mislabeled in her library budget.
Correct.
Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have heard you, Director, talk about the way that you've made these changes because of the pandemic, and I'm blown away every time I hear you talk about it.
Yeah, one second, Alderman Toledo.
So congratulations to you and your staff and the quality of the content that you're...
Oh, well, hold on. Alderman Toledo, can you hear us?
I think that is a no.
Alderman Toledo?
Yes, I can. I can wait for Alderman Deuter. I think we've both tried to jump in at the same time.
Okay, I just want to make sure you weren't jumping in because you couldn't hear. So I'll let Alderman...
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, Alderman Deuter, you finish, and then we'll go to Alderman.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. So we're going to let Alderman Deuter finish, and then we'll go to you.
Thank you. Just to put the number in context, the 167,000 people that you've had contact with this year, can you compare that to a typical year, just to give us an idea of the, I think it's an incredible amount of growth, and I just want to understand how much?
Yeah, so it's kind of interesting. You know, the last few years, we've been, like, in-person, we want to call it in-person programming, tends to hit about 16,000, 17,000 people or so. So that's about a tenfold increase in the reach we have. Now, that said, there's nothing better than face-to-face with people, and people love to come and see exhibits and see the real thing, the artifacts, what have you. But this avenue has been absolutely incredible for us. And again, we've learned some lessons we're never, we're never going to let go of. We started doing Facebook Live tours of the train exhibit since people couldn't come see it anymore. We had 300 people in person during the live event, but in the next period of the next week, 1,800 people chimed in to watch the recorded version of that and learn more about the exhibit. It's really broadening the reach. And the other thing I would say is Jess's virtual field trips to the schoolhouse now, she's actually pre-recorded herself setting up different lesson plans. Then the kids actually have a PDF where they do maybe penmanship, or oration, or the different things. And then she does an actual live Q&amp;A session, it's the schoolmarm via Zoom or Google Meet or what have you. We're reaching school districts all around us that have never seen the schoolhouse before. My ultimate hope in all of that, and I think we're making those connections, is we're going to have an awfully busy fall and spring when the lid comes off these COVID restrictions, because they're having a good time with us.
Congratulations. It's great.
Thanks.
Alderman Toledo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to circle back to the 60-39 line. Can we just make sure, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
It's a long delay.
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we can hear you.
I wanted to circle back to line item 60-39, just to make sure that it was on the... Can you hear me?
Yeah.
That cut out.
You cut out, but you're back now. Go ahead.
Hello? I can just maybe email these questions if this is a problem. It was working earlier.
Yeah, you keep cutting out. I think emailing might be the way to go. You're more than welcome to give one more shot if you want. I think that's our shot. All right, Alderman Toledo, we're going to let you email your questions.
I will try one more time, but I'm wondering if it's another caller on the line that is not muted?
Well, let's, go ahead and give it a shot. Mr. Kopp or Mr. Stenson, is it, would it make sense for her to call back in on a different line, or is this as good as it's going to get?
I think it's a subcall.
Okay.
It's a reception.
Okay. I got a text from Alderman Toledo. She has asked me to move on. So we're going to go with that. Any other questions or comments as it relates to the historical museum, history museum, sorry, pardon me? Alderman Hanquist, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Oberg, I wish you had more enthusiasm. Very disappointing. Every time I see you, I feel so inadequate. So just a quick question. Under the building improvements, I heard you call out everything falling under the grant, except for the HVAC, and I was curious, would that also fall under the grant?
Yes, that was just no mission of my part. We do have extending the HVAC system to the third floor of the Gloss Mansion as well as part of that grant application. And if we were able to do that, that allows us to bring more of the delicate materials on-site and have them easily accessible for research and exhibit development as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? City manager, is that it for the museum?
Yes, it is. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
And next, we will transition to Assistant City Manager Kopp to talk about a couple of divisions that fall underneath him. And so if we can get through IT, human resources, planning, zoning, and economic development, and building, that, depending on the time, that may be a wrap for tonight. We'll see...
Just hoping.
Oh, and I'm sorry, visitor and tourism as well falls under Mr. Kopp.
That's quite a lot. Okay, I know that under COVID, I had to read that statement about people being able to hear us. I don't think we're in an issue, we still have a public meeting, we still have a quorum, so I don't think we have an issue. I think Alderman Toledo will continue to listen as she can and potentially email you questions at a later time. So, Mr. Kopp, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure, starting with the IT department, page 110. In 2020, the IT processed over 3,000 requests for service, filtered over a million virus, spam, or malware attachments, and recycled over 4,000 pounds of electronic e-waste. Some of the projects that were completed in 2020 was the citywide project of license plates readers with the Target Alert System, which the police chief talked about last time, it's been very successful, identifying bad guys as they come into town. They also finished the deployment of the PCs citywide, and recycling and data sanitation of the previous PCs. And we're continuing to upgrade and consolidate our virtual environment throughout the city as the opportunities come about. We've been using the Microsoft Government Cloud and the Amazon Government Cloud, which have worked out very well for us. So when the opportunities are available, we'll take advantage of that. We're continuing to upgrade our wide-area network. As you're aware, last year, we signed an agreement with Comcast to bring fiber. We noticed our bandwidth wasn't large enough with what we had before, so we brought fiber to the, most of the main city buildings. And as the Public Works Committee is aware of, as the SCADA projects are done, we've been bringing fiber to the lift stations and pump stations also. Our goal is that, as those continue to get completed, hopefully with, when our agreement's up in five years with Comcast, we'll be able to switch all our city buildings also over to our own private network, they'll have our own private fiber network. We're building it out right now to have the ability to be able to do that as we do the public works projects right now. The other thing we're bringing to bandwidth is, we're hoping this year, we're working with Comcast right now, we're hoping to get, been done with it already, but to do the programming for Channel 6 right out of City Hall. And we'll talk about a little bit more, get the cable TV part of it, but, you know, one of the things to be able to do that is have the bandwidth here to be able to do it, as well as you have to have the programming for it. They'll give you the channels, but you have to use them. As we look at the budget itself, 8003, what's in there is replacement of the police and fire MDTs. They were in the 2020 budget, we pushed them due to the COVID and not being aware of exactly uncertainty in our revenues. The issue with the MDTs, for police especially, we were able to get one more year of maintenance out of it last year. This next year, Pujitsu, who makes them, they're no longer an MDT business, so it's become a time and material type thing. Those are the things, they're used 24/7, so we think it's really important to get those replaced this year. Also, in 8031, computer software, we have $100,000 in there to look at a new ERP and possibly a consultant to help us identify it. Our EAP we have right now, AS400, was a Sungar product back in the day, it's now owned by Central Square. We think that there's some efficiencies that can be done with a new ERP or an upgraded ERP. We've been waiting for Central Square to come out with a new upgraded version. They yet have not been able to produce that to a level they think we need, so we're going to start doing an evaluation of possibly redoing our ERP, which I think, if we can upgrade our ERP, we can accomplish a lot of efficiencies as far as accounts payable, permitting, building inspections, scheduling of them, and as far as the inspectors being able to do them with a lot less input manual once they get back from their inspections. So we'll look at that this year. If you look out in the five-year capital budget for IT, you'll see that those, that there's money put out there to allow us to do that if we choose to do so. And then, in 8098, we have in there, we have some, we have copiers we replaced this year. Our copier's now eight years old, the maintenance form has gone up tremendously over the last year, so the downtime has gone up also, so we're going to take a look at possibly replacing. And the technology in those is definitely way better than it was even eight years ago. So looking at doing that. Also, there was some money in there for audiovisual. In the 2020 budget, we pushed out till next year for, like, cameras around the city facilities and stuff like that, too. So any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Mr. Kopp, you talked about the, potentially a new ERP to help us out. Is that, is that, I know, well, can you point to me where that's in the cabinet? Is that reflective of the first payment in the 2022 budget?
The actual, the cap for IT is actually the last page in the whole budget book.
Huh, okay.
And if you look at application software for 2021, it's $115,000. A big portion of that $115,000 is for the analysis of moving to an ERP. You see 380 in the four years out, and that is for implementation of new RP. We'd have to move some of that up if we would actually do that, but realistically, from talking to the Misspellies, if I change the ERP when I do that, it's probably a good 24-month process to get that totally done.
Okay.
And then the last thing with, also, was talked about last time, but in the supplement package you got today, the actual page, 356, is the page that identifies how IT is broken down. And then as you go through the budget, the 9501 line item in every other department is their share of the IT costs.
Okay, on 356, there's a schedule, you're talking about the bottom half.
Correct.
Kind of breaks out how the IT expenses are split up.
Correct.
I think that was kind of, we had a similar question last week about that. Is that allocation, is that resource allocation, is that done by personnel or by number of computers?
Number of computers assigned to that department.
Okay. All right, that's on page 356. I know we see that scattered throughout a bunch of schedules this budget, but that's a good reference. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Kopp as it relates to IT? Alderman Levin?
Thank you. I'm not in... ERP, I know what that stands for, but what software specifically are we replacing as part of?
That's our, all our budgeting software. It's a GM, what's it stands for, GMBA, which is all the government budgeting software. It's everything from accounts receivable, accounts payable, it's all the budgeting software. It's all our ticketing software right now, it's all the building department, community development software, planning and zoning, building department inspections, permits. It's pretty much our whole, it's the main package of software for all our departments right now. They all talk to each other, the finance department, the building departments, when a permit goes in, you pay for your permit. It's, you know, it's the software package.
Is this the software that, because I know we just went with a separate ticket system, and I know we were looking at a HR system at one point, so is this pulling it all together, or are these...
Pull it all together is what it is. It's right now, is that the software right now is not, it's not able to do the things we want it to do. And so what we're trying, we're doing now is we're sort of picking one thing at a time to try to make that part better. But the ultimate is that you have one software package that it all talks to each other, it's all backed by one provider, and it's just that more efficient. So it's like, doing the DACRA is almost like a workaround of what our software is right now as far as for the ticketing and finance software.
So would this ERP replace DACRA, for instance, or DACRA...
Possibly it could. I mean, depending on which software package we, which provider we go with, some of them have a package that is as good as DACRA, you know, or, you know. So we'll have to see how that all plays out, because there are a number of different municipal software providers, and they all have different benefits to them. So it's like, well, that's what part of the evaluation would be for this year, to determine what would be our best and how that would all play into it.
Okay, thank you.
I would add that ideally, it works with DACRA. There are some, there are some systems out there, but as Mr. Kopp said, we need to go through that analysis to see what overall is best for the city.
Anyone else as it relates to IT? Alderman Hanquist or Alderman Toledo, if you can hear us? Do you, either one of you have any questions?
This is Alderman Hanquist. I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. So, mic on the cab 110, the last page?
I do not.
There you go.
Application software, I see the 115, and that ties back to what I saw there, the 380. That threw me a little bit in the out ears. Is, is it going to cost us... 380. That threw me a little bit in the out ears. Is it going to cost us more in the long run?
Oh, yeah. I mean, a new application software is going to be somewhere around a million and a half dollars, most likely, somewhere in that area.
So what's the 115 represent, then? Because I thought that seemed really low.
Yeah, a portion of that is actually the ability to hire a consultant to help us identify which software package is going to be the best for the city of Elmhurst. If we choose to do that, we, you know, we're starting to right now just look at as a staff, as an IT group, looking at the different software packs out there. We may not need to do that. We may be able to just make the decision without hiring a consultant to do that. Another part of that, too, is also in this budget here under the hardware. You see $100,000 for the IBM i7 i8. That's the server right now for our AS400 package. So there might be an opportunity, if we can make a decision to move to a different ERP, we may not need to upgrade that server and not need a consultant. So that could be $200,000 towards ERP, you know, if that all works out that way based on the research we do.
Is it realistic for the circle back if, so that's a big jump, you know, what we're paying today for application software to the 380, which I totally get, but if, is it possible to identify or articulate, you know, the benefits or the ROI associated with that additional spend?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. As a circle back, we don't have to spend time tonight on that.
Any additional questions? All right, let's move on, Mr. Cop.
Human Resources is next on page 108. The Human Resources Department works on managing the employee and labor relations, performance management, staffing recruitment, training and development, compensation benefits, and risk management program administration. They're also liaison to the Board and Police and Fire Commission for the hiring and promotion of police officers and hiring of firefighters. They're also liaison to the Insurance Committee, which providing guidance and resource and evaluate insurance coverage and promote programs. This is something that was negotiated with, I believe it was the fire contract, two contracts ago, maybe one or two ago?
Might have been three.
Three ago. And so it's a member from the police union, fire union, a member representing the non-represented members, and then three management people. And I think this has been a very successful committee. I think it was a big part of us to be able to get the number of employees that we have on a high deductible health plan from the PPO, which is a great savings to us, and the promotion to get us into the gin insurance network. I think by having those representatives from those different groups really helped us promote the benefits of the different programs we've instituted since then. Some of the things, if you look at the budget right now, 3052 professional services. Part of that line item is just citywide training is a part of it, but it's also strategic planning. I know the city manager plans on updating our strategic plan in 2021. Those dollars are in there for doing that. It's also where dollars come from our employee assistance program and performance management system. In 2019, we instituted a new performance management system with a new performance evaluation tool. And one of the things that, it was a big employee group that helped us design the tool. My consultant came in to help us from NIU. And so one thing we said was that if we're going to spend this time to develop this, then we're going to spend the time to make sure it works properly. So we've been putting dollars in the budget to have continual training for those that not only are evaluated in performance management system, but those that actually evaluate that it's not just a once a year type of evaluation, that it's coaching, counseling, it's everything. And so there's dollars in this budget to continue that training, three or four times a year is what our goal is to do it. And it's also part of the performance management program this year, so do a comprehensive review of all of our job descriptions. You know, as people get in different roles, things morph into different things. We just want to make sure that their job descriptions are accurate to what they should be. And another thing is, we've asked our HR director to work on our risk management program as far as like workman's comp safety. I know she's developing a new safety program for all the directors, our safety committee for the directors, so everybody understands the cost to the city of Elmhurst when there's something like, an injury or something like that, that comes in workman's comp. So those dollars are all in that, in a 3052 line item. The one thing I just want to, I want to point out is the great work that our HR department's done this year with the COVID. They really were the ones that facilitated the remote, the remote work, the return to work arrangements, the light duty combinations. For those on light duty, our greeters, they set up the greeters table when we first opened back the city hall, the policies for how we should open, when we should open, the temperature taking, the new kiosk, and they made sure that that greeters table was staffed when it needed to be staffed, and things like that. And when the new Family First Coronavirus Response Act came out, which when it came out from the government, it was not the clearest policy ever wanted to see, they worked hard on making sure that we did what we were supposed to do as far as providing relief for our employees. So any questions? I'd be glad to ask, answer them.
Any HR questions? Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you. It's really just a comment. I noticed that HR staff have also been present for early voting, keeping people's lines moving. That's been very helpful, and I appreciate all the work. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. They set up the whole program. That's how it ran through the building. So thank you for recognizing that.
Alderman Hanquist or Alderman Tullow, any questions?
Not for me, Mayor. Thank you.
None for me.
All right, Mr. Cop, let's move on.
All right. Planning Zone Economic Development, page 114. In 2020, the Planning Zone Division processed more than 25 cases for conditional use zoning text amendments and variations. It began facilitating the update of the 1992 zoning ordinance. It also worked with the Engineering Department, a new bike and pedestrian plan, assisted with implementation of the sustainability plan, and acted as a staff liaison to Historic Preservation Commission, and oversaw and organized the code enforcement efforts upon the retirement of our only full-time code enforcement officer during the hiring freeze. And our Assistant City Planner continues to do that at this time. We also implemented the Remote Planning and Zoning Commission Meetings, which I think we were one of the first communities to actually start allowing public hearings again, and helped with our Business Development Coordinator in expanding outdoor dining operations, the temporary use that we expanded and ran that through the zoning process. It was originally an executive order. We ran through the zoning process, so when the executive order is no longer in effect, the opportunity to help our businesses still was. Line item 3052 is professional services, and this has the completion of our, review of our comprehensive review of our update, our 1992 zoning ordinance, future planning for Elmhurst Business Parks, which the DPZ Committee has been working on right now. We're hoping to get back a market study that was, that's being done by Tracy Cross and Associates within the next few weeks, and based on that, maybe look at some subarea planning for our industrial park. And just some general planning. In 2020, we began the process of updating our 1992 zoning ordinance, but due to COVID-19 and the uncertainty of our revenues, we suspended the process. We're probably about 15% into the process right now. We met with the ZMP, we met with the DPZ, we did some public input with the stakeholder meetings, and got a feel for it. They were just starting to do the evaluation on our current code. I mean, we've run some text amendments, and they can be effective for specific issues, but often there's unintended consequences when you're not looking at it globally or holistically. And so we've been like just picking, as things come up as a problem, we've been nitpicking, picking them out and trying to make adjustments to the code. But a lot of times, especially our code is done, one of the things we're trying to look at it was, all those zoning regulations from one district should all be in one spot. Right now, you could look at like the setbacks for the C3 district, but if you didn't know that, under the Regulations Chapter, that there's some, that it's what it says here, except for when it's this situation. So we're trying to get a more user-friendly, intuitive process, and so we want to look at it more holistically. You know, this was, during the Great Recession, this was one of the line items that was easy to cut, the planning dollars. And then I believe it was Alderman Levin, he's the DPZ, the DPZ Chair at the time, recommended we start putting dollars back in there and the benefits of planning. The city council agreed, and since that time, we've done the subarea plans for the comprehensive plan, updated five of those. We did the downtown plan. We did a North York Corridor Plan. And I think updating our zoning ordinance would be helpful in implementing those plans based on it is right now. And some of the other things about updating it, it would be like, right now, like around our downtown, there's Outer Court Residential, which a lot of the public input for, we did our downtown plan, talked about putting those Outer Court Residential there. But if you look at it, there's seven different Outer Court Residential areas around our downtown. And a lot of them are unique, they have unique nuances or uniqueness to them, so maybe they should not all have the exact same zoning regulations. Same with our C3 districts. Grande Avenue where the car sales is a C3 district, Spring and Butterfield where American Legion and the Butterfield Exchange is C3 district. So the new, one of the things now, as we modernize our zoning ordinance, it's called place-based regulations. And so the uniqueness of those areas is regulated based on uniqueness of those areas. Also, we've talked about a number of times that DPZ was some kind of administrative authority for minor zoning variations. Right now, a lot of times, people for just a minor fence variation or a small front porch encroachment, have to go through the whole public hearing and zoning entitlement process. And we think that we could put an administrative policy in there where there's still notification to the neighbors, and if there's any type of issue with the neighborhood, then it would have to go through the public, the whole public hearing process. But we think that administratively, some of these things, we're putting the residents through a lot more than we think that they'd have to go, need to go through with that. Also, our use lists are very long and detailed. I mean, when our CO was in place, there were no such thing as doggy daycare cares, and there was, but there were still video stores. And our CO has, you know, so it's like, we're trying to get modernized, modernized where we are today. So we think it's imperative that we can continue to update that 1992 ordinance in the next budget year. Also in this budget is 6045 Public Information Programming. That's basically administered by Business Development Coordinator Jason, and includes a program for our commercial real estate professionals. And I mean, I got to call out our business developer, Jason, for this. During COVID, her job definitely changed tremendously. I mean, she's been 24/7, 365, I mean, just like, nonstop, trying to reach out to our businesses. And it really brought to light the importance of those relationships she has built up to this point. And part of the building relationships were the events we used to have for our brokers, our business owners, our building owners, our property owners. And she was able to pick up the phone at any time and call anybody, and they would take her call, whether it was a property owner, a business owner, whether it was one of our brokers we deal with all the time, trying information. Her relationship with the, with our representative from the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity is off-the-charts good, and she's been able to just monopolize on those relationships she's built. So we want to get into this next year, if you look at that line item, it's tremendously low from what it was due to everything that's going with COVID. We're trying to get that back up so we can even, we might not be able to hold those events we held in the past, but to have some kind of relationship-building opportunity. It may be something different we've never done before based on how this next year goes, but it really highlighted the importance of those relationships. And even some of the ideas that Erin Jason came up with as far as like our Explore Elmhurst. If you're not following our Explore Elmhurst, you probably should be, but anybody out there should be. It's, and you know, we first put that on it, we were not going to solely just identify like one business at a time type of thing. It was going to be more global for the whole city of Elmhurst. But once COVID hit, it became important that we did everything we could to help our business. And so Erin literally, all day, all times, day and night, weekends, you'll see her posting. If you post something on your website, on your Facebook, and she sees it, she'll repost on Explore Elmhurst. We've got, I can't tell how many compliments from business owners, from residents saying, I never knew we even had that in town. So it's, I mean, she pivoted. I mean, it's been a great, it's really been a great success for what we've done. Even our downtown, as far as working with how we can help our businesses with the outdoor dining, our temporary use permits, things that, we've gotten calls from the municipalities and asked Erin, just tell me how you did, because we're going to do the exact same thing. So with that line item, like I said, we just want to get that back up to the level where we can continue to build those relationships. Glad to ask any questions from, anybody on that stuff?
Any questions for planning? Alderman Hanquist or Alderman Tullow?
I'm good, Mayor. Thanks.
I'll reiterate what Mr. Cop said as it relates to, if now's the time to do it, as it relates to Erin Jason. She's really become the conduit for almost all businesses in town and how it relates to the governments and the governor's orders. She's on the phone constantly interpreting if it's not actually talking with somebody on the government side to find out actually what the orders mean. It's walking our businesses through it. And she really does, if you spend even 20 minutes with Erin and watch her do her job, the amount of phone calls, she feels, feels, and the people that she knows and the answers that she has. She's really become a go-to person and an asset. And I can tell you this, almost without exception, if I'm in our downtown area and I'm talking to one of our business owners, inevitably Erin's name comes up because she has had contact with him sometime in the past week. So, anyone else? Okay, let's move on.
Next is the Building Department, page 122. Through September of this year, we issued over 3,700 permits, a total construction value of over $185 million. Our inspectors have performed over 700 inspections, and code enforcement officers have performed over 1,400 inspections and sent out over 500 code violations. Through September, we have issued 47 new home permits and have an additional 15 in the plan review process right now. That is down about 30% from what it was last year. Part of that issue is we've seen that there's talking to the builders, lumber prices are like two to three times what they were due to the slowdown from the mills and whatnot during the COVID process. So there's still a lot of interest. I mean, in Elmhurst, there's still a lot of interest. Our Building Department is one of the things that never really slowed down. I mean, it's changed a little bit as far as the smaller permits, lots of them, fences, patios, things that people, I think, are home looking out their back windows thinking, now's the time to do this. Remodels are up, auditions are up. So I mean, it's stayed, it's stayed pretty brisk in the, in the building, the Building Department. The other thing I want to just talk about is the stormwater issue has been a thing for us for many years around here. The Building Department administers the check valve program, the overhead sewer program, and the new INI programs. And so there are nine new check valves this year. That's 231 since its inception. 11 new overhead sewers, that's 185 since its inception. And then that Southwest Basin identified like 300 homes eligible for, for these different programs. So right now, there's over 600 homes right now that have either improved their protection from flooding or reduced infiltration. Next year, we still see things moving forward. Some of the bigger projects, McMaster Cars adding a $40,000 addition to their already a million square foot facility. The two downtown condo projects, some have, 105 Cottage Hill, the hill already has people living in it. 195, they're hoping to close on some actually this month. The Lanar Project over next to the 195 project is hoping to have occupancy March of 2021. There's two, two, three townhome buildings going on North Addison Avenue next year. And Christopher Glass up on 832 Industrial is already planning for more than one addition. So it's, Building Department is staying very busy. If you look at just real quickly on the line items itself, 1002 wages part-time. As you notice, that is up, but you'll also see a corresponding lowering of 312 consulting fees. What we did, we had a, we had a contract plumbing inspector, and based on the number of inspections we were doing, we found it to be way more efficient and economical for us to have a part-time plumbing inspector rather than just a contract per inspection inspector. We think we're getting a way better service to our, to our residents by having the part-time plumbing inspector. 3092 contract staffing, we do have a contract, one contract inspector that helps us when we need to. He's also a licensed electrician, so he focuses on some of the large plan reviews where there's large services in the buildings. He'll help us do the review on those. I mean, other than that, code books, you'll see that that was, that was in 2020. We moved that to 2021. And that's to do the comprehensive rev, update of our building code. We're on a, we're on a cycle, do it every nine years, so 2021 is the, is the time to redo it. So that's just, we'll be doing our own amendments to the International Building Code. And any questions?
Questions for the Building Department? Alderman Brennan.
Thanks, Mr. Cop. So, page 122, 1001. So are you current, I may have missed this, I apologize. Are you a current headcount this fiscal year?
No. We're down, we're down our only full-time code enforcement officer.
Okay.
He retired early this year.
Okay.
Repeat that, sorry.
That was our code enforcement officer. We retired. We have not replaced that position of our assistant- Our Assistant Planner has stepped in to take over those duties temporarily as we get through this.
So the 2021 budget assumes backfilling for that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
As I said in the, in the first day when we were reviewing the budget, the positions that are frozen right now are included, but we'll be evaluating all those as we go through it to either backfill or find out some other way to provide that service.
Alderman Palomski?
Thank you. With the updates to the building code books, is it possible to have more of our building code available online? Like when people have questions, I know that there's some portions that you can find and other things, oh, we'll go to the International Building Code and some things are not available online.
That's, that's a good question. I'll have to evaluate that. I know we can, we can purchase online building codes for an annual physical service fee to have, to have that. I will look at how that works as far as being able to have public facing.
Thanks.
Alderman Deuter?
Thank you. Mr. Kopp, you talked about, I want to make sure I got these numbers right, was it, when it comes to the code enforcement activity, were we at 400 inspections?
1,400.
1,400. And so that's response to complaints typically?
Correct.
Or things that they see?
It's, the large majority of it is complaint-driven.
Okay. And then 500 actual citations?
Code violations, it might not be an actual citation, maybe a warning.
Okay, okay. Can you describe the system we use to track those now? Do we?
I mean, really, it's our AS400 ERP, that's, a lot of that is in there. Because of the clumsiness of using that system, a lot of it's done through Excel spreadsheets to keep track of the cases. But every case gets entered into the AS400, which is our ERP. It's just the tracking of it becomes difficult the way the ERP is set up right now. The one thing, this new Elm Hirst Connect app, is we're going to, we're going to move towards that. So code violations will be one of the things you can report from, through the app. But we're also doing it, as we're doing it right now through our test, our test process we're in through it right now. I guess they didn't talk about the app yet, that's coming up. But we're coming out with the new app, mobile app, and it's, it's, you'll be able to, there's a whole bunch of things you can do, code complaints are one of them. And so even if it's not done through the app, if somebody calls it in and one of our customer service reps answer the phone and it's a complaint for code enforcement, they will enter into the app. And so, and that will give us good analytics as far as code enforcement activities.
I ask a follow-up, and you think that might be a tool that could be used more easily for tracking?
Yes, it definitely will be.
Good to know, terrific, thank you.
Alderman Levin?
Thank you. I will respond, I think, to Alderman Palomski, because when we were on DPZ, one of the things which amazed me was that we adopt a lot of the International Building Codes, but because they're privately owned, we can't post them online. So, and then I was told by the then-city planner that, well, all the builders have them, so, but the public doesn't. Topic for a different day, but the question I wanted to pursue a little bit was actually ties into the app that we've been talking about for a while. So the first question is, when is that looking to go online? Because I thought we were a 2020 project on that.
You know, that, it was supposed to be a 2020 project. What happened was the original app company that we went with, there was an issue with their limited liability, where we were never able to complete that contract. And so we looked out for a different provider and now we're with rock solid and we're, we're in the test phase right now. We're hoping by mid-year or sooner that the app is, is available to the public.
All right. I think that might be part of the solution to the issue I wanted to talk about, which is that particularly this year, I've had a number of people call and complain about builders and, you know, it's, and I talked to Bruce DeBeal, I guess we don't really track problem builders, I didn't think we had that many, but one in particular came on my radar three times already this year. But there doesn't seem to be a record of that. That also ties into the fact that the, we, I think we need to be very careful to know that before we issue the certificate of occupancy, that the builders have fully complied with their obligations and that the valid complaints of neighbors and those particularly surrounding properties are addressed. Because sometimes I get the call and the certificate's issued and the answer is it's a civil matter, but most residents aren't looking to hire a lawyer, which they should, to, to pursue legal action. So, you know, it's something that we should be looking at before we let it go online.
Right. And I would ask that, if you have residents complaining, that we would appreciate, if there's a problem, call 911. Honestly, that gets a record of it and, and.
Be later?
Yeah, later. I mean, I think that's, you know, that way that's, then the record's there and then we'll get a report of it, most often the police will report to us. And then we can put it, and there are, it does happen quite often where it gets marked in our AS400 that no CO can be issued without remedy to the problem.
So if, if a builder has damaged a neighbor's property, you're proposing they call, I mean, I'm just curious.
I mean, preferably they call us, but I'm sorry, it's like off, off-hours it happens often too. I mean, don't, don't wait, don't not call. I mean, that's.
I assume it's, that's if it's something urgent as opposed to?
Even if it's off-hours and I mean, it's like, I, I think it's fine if they would. If it's something that happens, I would prefer you call our, our, our Building Department, Code Enforcement Department, but we're not, I mean, we've had that happen before, it's an off-hours thing, there's no one to get a hold of, people end up not calling, they should, we prefer they just call 911, have a police officer go out to the scene. Normally it's not, I mean, if it's someone, let's just say that a builder damaged their driveway, right? Let's just say that's the situation. That one most likely called the Building Department, but it happens like they're working after hours or there's, you know, you know, that kind of stuff like that.
All right, thank you.
Anything but call a lawyer. Alderman Mulliner?
I'll just follow up with that. Just an example was when the tree was being cut down on the parkway after they were told not to, 911 was called on that one. Because it was a situation where it was off-hours, they figured they had an opportunity over a weekend to take a tree down.
Additional questions for Mr. Kopp? For the Building Department? All right, what's next?
Cable television, page 152. This is their professional services, the gentleman in the back room right there, that's part of what this goes towards filming, the community hall meetings, filming the City Council meetings. It's also another program we do throughout the city, public programming, PSAs. That's one of the things we talked about earlier, that Channel Six, where it's going to start being initiated out of City Hall. I've talked about it, Comcast will give you a public channel, but you have to use it or you lose it type of thing. I know Business Development Coordinator Jason and Communications Manager Shreff have been working, we're working in that pre-COVID. And so we just sort of cut all that back right now, so we see that, that budget for 2020 was reduced due to the uncertainty of the revenues at that time, but the money's back in there now to start doing that programming again. And that's pretty much what that budget covers.
Any questions about cable television? All right, City Manager, we've got 15 minutes, you want to do one last?
How about two, three?
I'll give you one.
It's going to be a quick one, I think.
One more. One more, that's it.
President Tourism, page 153. This, the line item 3098, that $95,000, that's for the trolley. As you can see, we, we chose in 2020 due to COVID, there was no really realistic opportunity.
Wait, Mr. Kopp, go back, I missed it already.
Page 153.
Oh, 3098.
3098.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And so the trolley dollars are back in, we're putting back in the budget again, it's got to be evaluated as time goes on, whether there's even opportunity to do it again or not, or do we choose to do it at all based on our revenues? Or can you do it even if it's still COVID going, is there even an opportunity to do that? But the dollars are in there for that, in that line item. 6032, again, Community Grant Program, you'll see that in 2020, it's, the numbers are way down because only a couple things got funded this year on 6032. But again, we put that money back in there for the Community Grant Program for next year. I know a lot of our civic partners are, it's very important to them, being able to do what they do for the community. Public Information Programming, that's like our Visitor's Guide, and we have a Visitor's Guide that we've developed, will update it, and it goes in all the hotels in the, in the area, not just our hotels. It's also our city photographer, social media, stuff of that nature for that. And then 6098 is the city center subsidy since the removal of SSA number seven.
Alderman Palomski?
Mr. Mayor?
We'll go to Alderman Palomski and then go to you, Mr. Honquist, after that.
Thanks, Mayor. I have a question about the, just generally hotel motel tax. Do we see that the year after it's been collected? So for example, the, like this, these budget items reflect that revenue from the year before?
Right. It's, uh, I think, yeah, it's based on one quarter of 1% of the hotel motel tax.
Okay, so then?
When do we collect it, I think was the question.
It's paid, it's, we get billed for last year, we just, we just got the bill not too long ago for last year, is that right, Tom? And so what we did, this, if you'll see this is, is down quite a bit, and so was it down estimated for 2020. And that is the, the Dubage Convention Visitor Bureau, last time during the Great Recession, was the same thing. Our number, it's at one quarter of 1% is probably higher than that, but it's, it's like a negotiated deal with them based on the economy and the way things are going right now. So we're making the assumption that based on what we did for 2020, we'll be able to do the same thing in 2021, because we don't see hotel motel tax coming back the way that it was prior, prior to COVID.
You're talking about for the memberships?
Well, that's how the membership, that's how the membership's determined, that's the hotel motel tax. It's supposed to be like one quarter of 1% of the, of the hotel motel tax, which at the $27,000, when we're, we're collecting $400,000, just over $400,000, it was about accurate. I mean, I know our collections are down, but not down to that level.
Okay, Alderman Palomski, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, so I mean, not just so much with the memberships. Do you have a general idea of what hotel motel tax revenue for the city will be, like next, for next year? I mean, what?
Yeah.
Percentage of, of a typical year? What 2020 has been up to this point?
On page 86 is the hotel tax projection, so we're, we're basically down, you know, 50% plus that we're estimating in 2020. We do have that coming back in 21, not all the way, but it is back just shy of 300,000 that we're estimating.
Do you see that on page 86, it's the last line item?
Yeah.
It shows projected revenue from that hotel motel tax. So 200,000, 204,000 for this year, back up to almost 300, but not back up to where it was.
Okay, yep.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Honquist?
Thanks, Mayor. I had just a question on the trolley. I know with budgets tight, we're starting to look at items that we can cut. I know that was also at the time, because I was involved in it, there were members of the community businesses that were willing to advertise. And I recall there was a problem with that for some reason, and I just want to ask again, is that something we could potentially go out and do? Maybe it doesn't cover the entire cost, but maybe it covers some or half the cost? So that's my question.
Yeah, we, we do advertise on it right now, and I can't remember spots, say there was 20 spots that we could advertise on it with. The only issue was that the advertising is we, the Chamber of Commerce runs it for us. And they get, they take a percentage of the advertising for it. It's minimal dollars based on Elm Hirst businesses advertising on it. I don't know, that it would offset much of the cost. I forgot what the, I forgot what the number was, Tom, you know what it was? $4,000 or something? $4,000, I think, something like that.
That's all we've got, and it's $4,000?
Yes.
Maybe we should look at taking that over and selling it ourselves.
Well, I, not to defend the chamber, but the, the, the chamber itself gets an ad rate of maybe 17% of that. So their number is whatever 17% of 4,000 is. So it's, it's not, they're not taking the majority of it.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not criticizing the chamber for what percentage they get or not, I just, you know, I'm just going back to the people that said they were willing to support it. If people are willing to support it, I'd expect that, that more people would be writing larger checks. That's my point.
Okay.
So $4,000 is, is a small drop in the bucket compared to, you know, what a lot of people are saying they would be willing to do to support it if we got it going. Now that it's been going and it's, it's obviously been very successful, I'd like to see some of those folks step up with larger contributions to keep it going.
Maybe raise our rates is what you're saying.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
All right.
Thank you.
I got it. Any other questions on visitor and tourism? Before I entertain a motion to adjourn? Alderman Park's ready. All right, anything you want to add, Mr. Kopp, before we wrap it up on this item and this item only?
No, sir.
Okay. Let's look at our calendar before we wrap up. So we'll be doing this again after committee meetings next week, right, Mr. Kopp? I mean, Mr. Grabowski?
Yes, sir, that's the plan.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, motion by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Kennedy. Clerk Tamer, please call the vote.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Primus? Dunn?
Aye.
Graham absent.
Palomski?
Aye.
Kejo?
Aye.
Toledo?
Move on.
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Aye.
Honquist?
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays, one absent.
12 ayes, zero nays, motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, thank you, staff, look forward to seeing you next week.